Good evening. I'd like to call to order the January 17, 2017. Happy New Year's, everyone. Planning Commission to order. Roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Guerrero.
Here.
Commissioner Hale.
Here.
Commissioner Hunter.
Here.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Here.
Commissioner White is absent. Vice Chair Bondano.
Here.
And Chair Radcliffe.
Here.
Thank you.
Please rise and join us as Commissioner Schmidt.
Approval of minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, I'll abstain since I was absent at that meeting.
Great, thank you. Okay, Oral Communications. This is the part where someone may speak on a subject not on the agenda. I don't have any cards under that category if anyone wishes to... Great, we'll move on to consent calendar. We have nothing on our consent calendar. Off to public hearing. This is a request by Valerie Fuchsman for the condominium permit, planned development permit, and tentative map construction of 10 three-story for-sale residential condominiums at 910 Woodside Road.
And Chair Radcliffe, I'd like to introduce Jennifer Savage, our contract senior planner, a very valuable member of our team, and she will give an staff presentation this evening. Great, thank you.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Thank you. So this evening, I'd like to go over first a short background, then the project description, and then review the analysis findings and recommendation that are contained within the staff report. The project site is located at 910 Woodside Road. It is surrounded by multifamily residential uses to the west, south, and across the street to the east. Commercial uses border the project to the north and also across the street to the east. The site currently contains surface parking and a commercial building with a restaurant. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing improvements, both the restaurant and the surface parking, merge the two parcels, and construct one building that would consist of 10 for-sale condominiums. The units as shown on the site plan above show that each unit would contain two parking spaces within its own garage. The site would be accessed by one center driveway, and the site would be surrounded by pedestrian walkways and landscaping. The roof plan shows that as part of the project component, the roof will include portions of green roof. This enables the applicant to utilize the roof both as a unique open space component as well as a stormwater treatment. The project would be less than 38 feet tall, three stories. The exterior materials would consist of horizontal siding accents as well as mostly the first floor clad in wood siding and to match the garage door. Stucco siding would also be a part of the exterior materials as would a metal standing seam roof as well as the green roof, metal windows, and cable railings. As addressed in the staff report, the project does meet all of the mixed-use neighborhood requirements, including storage facilities for each unit and parking requirements. The AAC reviewed the project three separate times, and at the third meeting recommended approval of the current design. The project meets the planned development intent and requirements, including but not limited to the fact that it meets the intensity and density requirements of the zone and provides a unique element in that it would be Redwood City's first green roof. The project also creates a development that the tentative... Sorry, that the tentative map findings could not be made in so much that it does, it is consistent with the general plan, the zoning requirements, as well as the intensity and density intended for the site. The project does include a parking request, and that parking request is specifically permitted in the zoning code that would permit an applicant to request the elimination of guest parking spaces, subject to three conditions. The project meets the condition where it is in close proximity to retail services and facilities, the closest being the dental office just north of the site, but it is in walking distance to Safeway north of that dentist office as well as numerous food services and other personal service facilities such as dry cleaning along Woodside Road. That being said, the findings for the planned development permit, the parking exception request, the tentative map and condominium permit as well as consistency with the general plan can all be made, and staff recommends adopting a resolution to approve the project. This concludes staff presentation, and we're available for any questions.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions from...
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you just quickly just go over what were some of the callouts that the AAC had that it had to come back three times?
They were concerned about whether the applicant was providing symmetry or providing asymmetry. The applicant worked with the AAC recommendations and suggestions throughout those three iterations and meetings to figure out a way how best to fit the building within not only the building itself, but also the site context, the buildings on either side of it. The applicant may have slides that show that context and shows the relationship of their project with the two buildings on either side. The applicant chose to highlight both the asymmetry within the project as well as the materiality to balance the asymmetry but still create that symmetrical focal point with the colors and materials.
Mr. Hunter.
Yeah, one more question. Could you describe that green roof in a little more detail? It sounds innovative and first of its kind in Redwood City, but could you describe what it is a little more?
Sure. The green roof is designed to capture the rainwater that lands on that roof, and it would be collected through a designed layer of materials that consisted of dirt and plants appropriate to the climate and to its intended purpose. The soil and the plants would absorb some of the water, and some of it would be connected to the storm drain, where any water not absorbed by the plant material or the soil would then go into our storm drain. That water would essentially be treated by the green roof to a certain degree. So instead of it just being straight stormwater, it would be partially treated.
Do we have any presentation from an applicant?
We do.
Good evening, Madam Chair and committee members. Thank you for that presentation. I am Nina Nazrav, I'm the architect on the project here to present it. It is a 10-unit condo development on Woodside Road. I'd like to highlight that it's some much-needed housing that we need in this area. I'd like to speak greatly to the context of the area and its presence on Woodside Road. You know, having Woodside Road as a main artery here in the Bay Area. Okay, thank you. Here are two representations of the street facade. So looking heavily on the context, to the left side, we have 926 Woodside, which is a four-story housing building. To the north, we have, and to the right, we have 902 Woodside, which is a one- and two-story commercial building with a surface parking lot in the back. Both of these buildings heavily speak to an asymmetrical balanced design that represents itself on Woodside Road. So one of the biggest challenges we had was to create a unified street composition with a balanced facade composition. So there was two layers to it. We took an approach of an asymmetrical form for the occupant use and lighting distribution. So we used the asymmetry that was already presented itself on the site as a means to enable light that was evenly distributed within the units themselves. So looking on the left-hand side, where we're facing a four-story building, we are presenting to step the building back for greater light penetration, both for the proposed building and for the existing building next door. And then on the other side, where we have a much smaller mass that's only presented itself on the front side of the property, we are using the extended daylight that's already present there to light the interior spaces. In addition to massing, we are looking heavily at large window openings and glazed sliders throughout for greater light penetration. We are meeting and exceeding the percentage of opening requirements. So we are providing a great amount of light, and we are also proposing skylights on the top floor for much more light penetration. Speaking to the overall composition of the building, we had a lot of development with the AAC, focusing heavily on creating an appropriate balance on Woodside Road, which is a main artery in the area. So looking both at the street composition as a whole and the building as itself. A couple of things that we looked at specifically include articulation of the front facade with depth, so proposing to pop-outs with articulation of bold colors. We looked at asymmetrical elements, including a strong vertical element and a strong horizontal element. And we looked at various window compositions. So the pop-outs themselves have articulated window trim for a stronger depth to the front facade as well as different window alignments for a unified building composition as a whole. We're proposing some very simple and modern materials, which are primarily stucco with two colors, one being a main color and then a bold accent. And we're proposing horizontal wood siding as one of the strong asymmetrical balancing elements. We're also proposing landscaping in connection to the outdoors. As mentioned previously, we are proposing a green roof, which would be the first green roof in Redwood City. And we're proposing vegetation to the back of the property and to the front of the property as well. And I'm open to any questions.
Great, thank you. Any clarifying questions?
Alrighty, thank you.
Hey, this is a public hearing.
Move to open the public hearing.
Okay, motion and a second. At the moment, I do not have any speakers' cards for this particular project. If anyone would like to make any comments, they'll rush forward.
Motion to close the public hearing.
So I just wanted to point out that you had a motion and a second to open the public hearing, but you didn't actually vote on the motion, so...
Okay.
You can, for future reference.
Right, thank you. So we had a motion to open and close. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alrighty, we will move on to discussion. I did it. Open and close. Any clarifying, any questions? Commissioner Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So if I can have the developer just come up to the podium, the one who just spoke, or the one who can tell me, talk to me a little bit about the design. Hi.
Hi there.
So you talked quite a bit about the design and in regards to that, you were grabbing a lot in regards to light penetration as being kind of a focal point of the design and designing the building based on that. And I wanted to find out, was there anything that you guys got just from Redwood City itself that kind of gave you a little inspiration for the design? Or was this just based on light, or what else?
Well, light was one of the elements that we were looking at to form the building and to make sure that the interior of it was a very enjoyable space for the occupants. But there was other elements that we looked at as well for inspiration. I can't say there was anything specific in Redwood City that drew our inspiration to this.
Okay. That's all I have for right now, thank you.
Any other... okay. I do have a question. We have, you have four, I believe, bike lockers.
Correct.
For dental use. Are people, is, are the garage spaces large enough, easy enough for someone to store a personal bike in them? I mean, it seems like four lockers are kind of slim.
The garages are sized 20 by 20, I believe, with the 80 cubic yards of storage adjacent that was accessible through the garage. So that storage space could be used for bike lockers or for bicycles, depending on how the garage is situated. One convenient way that I found for storing bikes is to hang them, which takes minimal space, and you'd still be able to park a car within that allocated space.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The red curbs that are surrounding the building right now, do those go away, or do those stay? And they kind of go around and then around Safeway as well?
I'll check with staff, but I expect that no changes to the curb color or curb striping would be made as a result of the project.
So that's what I was possibly thinking. So I guess my concern on that would be, we talk about available parking on the street, but pretty much that's all red. So the guest parking, where would they, where would they go? Would they take a chance at Safeway, or what would happen?
The way that the guest parking would work for this project is they would look for street parking where there is any available, or they would look for nearby retail services and facilities. So Safeway would be an example.
So, and has a conversation been opened up with Safeway, letting them know that they could anticipate parking at their location?
No, with the number of units that are on the site and the context of the mixed-use neighborhood district, it was, the vision is to have a cohesive development within the mixed-use district. So along the entirety of, say, this area of Woodside, there would inevitably be a natural sharing of spaces. For this project, it would require three or four guest spaces. So you could imagine if someone was having a dinner at their unit on the site, and perhaps their guests were dropping by Safeway to pick up some wine to share at that meal, you would have that shared service where the Safeway customer would also be the guest of this development.
And Chair Radcliffe, I would just say that we wouldn't typically require guest parking on private property as a requirement. We would expect that guests would find spaces on public streets and public parking on the streets.
Out of the realm of reality.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, I'm just going to follow up on that because I had the same concerns about the parking. And thank you for clarifying that you wouldn't require it, but it is an area that has all red zoned around it. There's another apartment building across the street. I have a large family. I wouldn't even, you know, that's, I've been trying to understand why not a few parking spaces for guests. So that was, that was one of the questions, but, you know, that's just a concern that I have. Thank you for showing us the design and then the buildings next to it, because I was trying to see how this design that you came up with would fit on Woodside Road, especially with, you know, what's, you know, with the buildings that are up there now that are... Yeah, I was just trying to figure out if, you know, how it fit. And I guess I was just a little bit concerned about the design project and the architecture photo that were provided, so thank you for providing the additional photos. I would have liked to have seen maybe a little bit more of the drawings within the report. But I have some additional questions. I just made some notes over the weekend in regards to, you know, I always, I always keep asking about the dual plumbing. So in the report, item number 23, it talks about that, and I was wondering if it could be more explicit about the landscaping and the dual plumbing or configured to use recycled when it becomes available. So that's one of the things. I was also concerned about the construction on Woodside Road when it actually happens, and I'm concerned about what happens if... Because it's such a busy road, right? And the neighborhoods are already crowded. What happens if the contractors don't comply with this parking and staging plans? Maybe that's a question for the city. So that was one of the questions. And then one other comment, I guess one other thing that I was thinking about, as we're adding more projects that are for residential use on Woodside Road, is there anything that the city can do to improve safety on Woodside Road, especially on the crossings? Because, I don't know, it just seems like to me there, you know, there's not enough, you know, it's right across, it's right next to Safeway, there's a crossing there. There's a few other crossings that are, to me, not safe. So those are just some of the concerns that I had.
Thank you, Commissioner Guerrero. I'll go ahead and take the last question about safety. As you know, Woodside Road is State Route 84, so the city has limited control over the jurisdiction for that road, so we can continue to work with Caltrans, who does control that road, to see what other safety improvements we can make in the area or along the road with future projects. So we can, we can continue to work with Caltrans to improve intersections and crosswalks where we think we can get safety improvements. But beyond that, the city can't do anything by itself with regards to that particular road.
And then with regards to the parking again for guests, there's no, I mean, I know you're asking for the exception, but there was no other way to include any of that guest parking?
I'll take that one. Currently, with the way that our site plan works out, to be able to have guest parking, we'd need to encroach into the rear setback, and that is not allowed.
Righty. So, Mr. Turner, back to the state highway. Can we also ask the applicant to reach out to Caltrans and look for the safety issues of the pedestrians? Can they reach out as a request to look at the crossings?
Yep, the applicant can. Certainly, our transportation staff has a relationship with Caltrans, and we can probably help to effectuate any sort of change that might be necessary along with the applicant.
Do you think it would be, I mean, that it helps to have an applicant do that?
I think, since we have an established relationship with Caltrans, the city and the applicant together can approach Caltrans for improvements. That's probably the best way to go.
That'd be great, yeah. Commissioner Hale.
Well, then I'd like to make a motion. Let me get to it. Great. Adopt, like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 1620, finding the project consistent with the DTPP. No, this is the wrong one.
I have, oh, okay.
Thank you.
What, you don't understand my tagging system?
Adopt Resolution Attachment 1 approving the condominium permits, planned development permit, tentative map to construct 10 three-story for-sale residential condominiums at 910 Woodside Road, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval listed therein.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hale and a second by Commissioner Hunter. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Guerrero.
Yes.
Commissioner Hale.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
No.
Vice Chair Bondano. Chair Radcliffe.
Yes.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we are on to request by GrayStar Development for downtown planned community permit, including two guideline deviations, a tentative map, and affordable housing plan to construct an eight-story building with 350 apartment units, including 35 affordable units at the low-income level, 1,400 square feet of ground-floor retail space, and three levels of underground parking located at 1409 El Camino Real.
Madam Chair. So if it would permit me, I'm actually going to be recusing myself from this item, just based on the financial benefit that my employer could receive because of the proximity. So feel, excuse me?
Thank you.
Good evening. Are you ready for a staff presentation?
I am.
Good. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Lyndia Chan. I'm the project planner for this application. What I will do is just give you a brief overview of the project, and then I will discuss the direction that the Planning Commission provided, and then go over those changes before you. So just some background. Again, the applicant is requesting a downtown planned community permit, which includes two guideline deviations and a tentative map to merge seven parcels for a total lot size of 1.64 acres. They're also requesting an affordable housing plan as part of this development project. So the proposal is for an eight-story, 350-unit development proposal, which is comprised of 315 market rate units and 35 affordable units at the low-income level, and those would be for rent. The project, as revised, would incorporate 1,400 square feet of ground-floor retail, as well as 441 parking spaces within three levels of underground parking. So then the unit count and the number of parking spaces has not changed since the last time the Planning Commission considered it. So the Planning Commission last considered this project on November 1 of 2016, and at that time, the commission was supportive of the mixed-use development as well as the provision of onsite affordable housing and some of the design elements. to the north, also known as GrayStar 3, as well as to provide some changes to the ground-floor plane to provide a more varied and interesting element. The Planning Commission recommended Design Alternative 4, which provided four ground-floor units with entry stoops if it were to facilitate these designed, desired changes. The Planning Commission also asked staff to make a determination on Design Alternative with the upper-story setbacks to determine whether or not that could be proposed on this project. And so staff has provided a memo attached to the report. The Planning Commission did not direct the applicant to pursue that option, but we did find that it could potentially be done on this project, that the DTPP would allow that. So with that in mind, what I'd like to do is go through some of these design changes and highlight what changes have been made. So starting with the north corner, this is the area where the fewest changes have been made, but in the attempt to break up the ground-floor plane, the applicant broke up that brick colonnade to create varied roof forms and make it appear as, instead of one continuous element, as two. And that's to further reduce the scale at the northern end. But really, the most substantive changes occurred at the southern end. And I'll walk through this, hopefully with, here we go the mouse. So I'll start at the top or the top level. In terms of breaking up the roof form, one noticeable change is they removed this element at the corner and dropped the stories down by one. So this is now seven stories as opposed to eight stories. In this portion here, they broke up the massing or provided for physical variation by breaking up that roof form, by creating some depth and breaking up that roof alignment. So as opposed to one uniform height, it's now provides some depth and articulation. Continuing that theme to the middle section, the applicant also provided some recessed elements here and provided a breaking of the colors and materials. So continuing that theme. And the most notable change is this portion here. So as opposed to the retail that was previously provided in this element on the ground floor, it's now provided for three units with entry stoops. And this element here, and it's broken down into sort of three entry units, and then changed this corner unit, which is otherwise recessed, to a different colors and materials. And what that does is to break down the scale at the ground-floor level. They also, the entry stoops as shown here also incorporates landscaping, which is adjacent to the building. So that's another change. Focusing on the ground-floor level, just so you can see it a little bit better, previously you could see in the sidewalk area, they had the five-foot-wide planter strips. That's now been changed to the paver strips. And the reason for that is once they incorporated these entry stoops, it really narrowed that sidewalk width in front of the building. And city staff in discussion with them indicated that it would be preferable to have that be paved area so that it doesn't create a pinch point, in that that landscaping relief is otherwise provided at the building itself. The entry at the plaza also incorporates some planters to continue this theme of the planters along the building and to continue it beyond the residential elements. And then, of course, these bay windows here help to provide for more depth and relief on the residential units. To show what that looks like on the actual floor plans itself, as you can see, basically from the activity room and to the north, there's very little change. So the layout of the building remains virtually the same. But where there was previously the two retail components have now been incorporated into four residential units. So these are the four stoops that you see here. And then again, this shows the change from the planters and the planting space to the Just wanted to highlight a few things on the overview. Staff has received two public comments that were attached to your staff report, which voiced some concerns with just the intensity of the area in terms of traffic and the scale of the project. Subsequent to that, we also received 28 public comments. So those were emailed, staff has forwarded to the Planning Commission, there are hard copies that are available this evening, as well as for the public. I would say that the sort of themes of the comments are concerns with the loss of the ground-floor retail space and the inactivity of the frontage, concern with the scale and height of the project, indicating that it is too tall and too large, potential traffic impacts, potential infrastructure impacts, and the desire for increased affordable units. So that's just a, sort of some of the themes that we're seeing in some of those letters. Many of them are requesting that the Planning Commission exercise deferring the action and to allow the applicant to make project changes. I also would like to highlight that the applicant, as part of the attachment to the staff report, responded to public comments that were raised at the last Planning Commission hearing. Those are attached to your report and really speak to, again, the intensity of density in this area, as well as for traffic concerns that were raised in the traffic analysis. I would like to highlight that no new deviations were generated as a result of the design changes. The revised proposal still complies with the Downtown Plan Standards and Guidelines, with the exception of the two previously requested guideline deviations. It still complies with the general plan and the initial study, still finds the proposal will not result in any new environmental impacts or increased environmental severity beyond those identified in the Downtown Precise Plan EIR. The project still complies with the Affordable Housing Impact Fee Ordinance, as well as the housing plan, which effectively has not changed. Again, it provides for 35 below-market rate units at the low-income level, a contribution of 1.2 million in fees, and as well as a voluntary contribution of $250,000 for the 612 Jefferson Project. I apologize, it was noted as the Franklin Project, it's actually the Jefferson Project, which is the Habitat for Humanity project. And it also still complies with the tentative map findings. So with that, staff finds that it complies with the required findings and recommends adoption of the resolution for the three requested application permits, downtown planned community permit, the tentative map, and the affordable housing plan. I would also like to note that one of the other alternatives outlined in the report is for the Planning Commission's consideration, if there is concern with the loss of retail, one alternative would be a condition of approval to essentially replace this southern corner from the residential unit as it's shown to retail, and that would not affect the unit count. With that, I'm available for questions if the Planning Commission has any.
Clarifying questions, Commissioner Guerrero? Sorry. Okay. Commissioner Hunter?
Yeah, just one on the last slide on the alternative with adding retail on the south corner. That alternative would have retail, one retail on the north corner plus one retail on the south corner?
That is correct. So on the north corner, the space that they're proposing currently is 1,400 square feet. And the south corner, which is currently shown as a residential unit, would be approximately 2,000 square feet. It would probably be slightly less. So that would have residential, I'm sorry, retail anchoring both ends of the ground floor.
And you say that would not result in a loss of residential units. So where would the other residential unit go?
They would have to change their unit mix. So instead of...
But there would still be only seven stories height at that corner?
Right. So the recommendation would be not to change the actual form of the building, but to make changes internally within the structure. And they might either make a one-bedroom into two studios, or to do a two-bedroom into two one-bedrooms. But it's essentially what they did as part of this proposal was they changed the unit mix. They would go back and change the unit mix again to maintain the 350 unit count.
Okay, thank you.
I do have one question. What is to the right of this south corner?
To the right of that is the, oh, the south corner? I'm sorry, to the right of this portion here? That is the storage unit. So it's the, I think it's called the bicycle chain.
So it is a retail establishment?
Correct.
So you wouldn't be having one retail corner stuck by itself?
No, and let's see if I can zoom out. Not quite, but just beyond this, you can see is the storage building. They've got the, I think it's called Chain Reaction, which is the bicycle facility. And just beyond that is the Franklin Street Apartments, which also has ground-floor retail.
Okay, great, thanks. That helps a lot. Do we have a presentation? Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Hale?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick clarification. So on your explanation to Commissioner Hunter, you were referring then to, is it Alternative 2? Is that correct? That would provide for that retail corner? Yes, Alternative 2, and it would be a condition of approval. And because it would be a very straightforward change, it would be handled by staff. See, thank you.
Do we have any presentation from the applicant?
We do.
Good evening, Chairwoman Redcliffe, Commissioners and City Staff. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Jonathan Hayes. I'm with GrayStar Development. I'd like to point out a few highlights of this project. So this project before you tonight is fully compliant with all the applicable standards of the Downtown Precise Plan, as well as all but two of the applicable guidelines of the Downtown Precise Plan. Those two guideline deviations have been reviewed by Architectural Advisory Committee, and they are recommending approval of those deviations. Additionally, this project is also fully compliant with the Downtown Precise Plan EIR, and is consistent with the guiding principles of the Grand Boulevard Initiative. Furthermore, the project's located in a priority development area per the city's housing element, and the site has specifically been identified as suitable for development. As Lyndia had pointed out, the project is proposing 35 onsite affordable units at the low-income level, as well as approximately $1.2 million in contribution to the city's Affordable Housing Fund, and $250,000 to Habitat for Humanity to assist with homeownership opportunities within Redwood City. In closing, we're very proud of this project and how it helps to meet the city's housing needs, and I would hope that you approve this project this evening. What I'll do now is I'll turn it over to Chek Tang with Studio T, and he'll walk through the design revisions that you asked us to evaluate. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to come back and review with you some of the recommendations that you made to the project last time. I think, among other things that Jonathan has mentioned, I think the other thing that is improvement to the site is because we're assembling a series of parcels, what it does, it also helps to essentially do a comprehensive improvement of all the streetscapes around the entire block from Franklin, Diller, and all the way to El Camino Real. The other thing that we're also proposing for the project is a lot of sustainable feature, including lead building, EV charging stations, plumbing for future use, recycle water, and also water efficiency landscape features. As has been mentioned, that we have worked with staff quite a bit after your recommendation, and what you see before you this evening is actually a kind of collaborative effort, a design effort, that we have to respond to your comments, but also in concert with working with staff and some of the key elements. With that, I think the rendering that you see in front of you is really a bigger picture idea of how we'd break up the building. We actually looked at myriads of different solutions to respond to your comments. But one of the things that's really important, because if you look at the block to the west is a more symmetrical building, one of the big comments is that on this project, that the project ought to be a little bit more asymmetrical. And so also taking a cue from the DTPP, that it actually recommends building to kind of highlight the corners wherever is kind of a central location. So what we've done is kind of kept the kind of more prominent corner on the corner of Diller and ECR is kind of anchoring corner. And then I think the bigger picture is really diminishing the building toward the storage unit, so that there is a kind of a heads and tails to the project. I think as part of that discussion also is a consideration of the main change in kind of the ground plane, kind of creating more varieties of uses, that we elected to maintain the retail edge because Diller and ECR corner is pretty busy. So instead of having lift work at that ground level, we elected to still have some mixed-use component of retail on that ground floor, 1,400 square feet. And then as you go toward the storage unit, then we diminish the feel of that to more residential stoop kind of feel. Evan, slide. Okay. Thank you. So Lyndia has done a great job in terms of summarizing a lot of the changes in the design, and this is just a quick overview, and we'll get into a little bit more details in terms of the context of what we've literally done physically. So in terms of the increased facade articulation, we've worked very closely with the DTPP guideline to kind of come up with these, because at the same time while we're making these changes, we need to be mindful of how it complies with the DTPP. So one of the things, as Lyndia had mentioned, I think that one of the main items was that we actually lower, kind of we'll call it the tail end of this building, so that it begins to have kind of a secondary position as it comes to the alley. We actually looked at a couple of different options where we had actually even taken out more massing, but I think in terms of how it accentuate the each vertical component of the building that's called for the DTPP, we actually kind of concluded with this as a solution. The other thing is on the upper plane here on the secondary block, again, we created a more pronounced kind of upper-story setback here in addition to the bay window, the bay kind of conditions at the lift work. And the comments last time was to maybe learn some lessons from the Marsland project, where there's more variations of kind of articulations in the ground plane. So we've kind of taken that cue and went with that. And then also, I think there's some subtle changes on here that there, on the third story, and you can see that the eve line along the retail, the lobby, and the brownstone kind of condition all have very different variations in the cornice line and parapet heights. A little bit closer look, and the other thing that's very subtle that we've changed, here's kind of our roof deck pool, and it used to be essentially a flat facade all the way up. And what we've done is kind of pulled this back, so there's upper loggia, in essence, kind of lowering the banding, the horizontal banding down a full story while maintaining a very strong presence on this block here. We've reduced the height here, we've inserted the facade on the entire middle and top. We also have created, again, this series of kind of change in parapet height in addition to the bay window that we're creating here in order to kind of activate the street edge in a very different way than the retail edge. So this becomes a lot more residential here. So those are the major moves that we've made in terms of articulation and massing. But part of your request is also to look at the variations of color and material. So what we've done is, and this is the new proposal here, this is where we were before, you can see that we actually created also some textural element, for example, the Juliet balconies here in the mid-block, so that it kind of changes up even the fabric of the facade. In addition to that, we've kind of created very different window fenestration kind of frames, so that each one of these vertical component reads very differently, independently of each other, so that it kind of creates a finer-grain read, to the extent that we change up the brick facade here on the bay, so that this would be also very distinctive from the kind of the brownstone that we have here. One of the major elements is that we actually, because of the lift work, not the lift work, but the residential unit on the ground floor, what we've done is kind of worked with the Public Works and also to kind of create a edge, that's urban edge, that's a very different pedestrian experience with much more landscape buffer. So these are just more detail, kind of look at what we've done here. And some of the subtlety what we've done is also looking at some of these fenestration and also the spandrel conditions in each one of these components, so that each one of the architectural components have a different expression in detail and colors. balconies here in the mid-block, so that it kind of changes up even the fabric of the facade. In addition to that, we've kind of created very different window fenestration kind of frames, so that each one of these vertical component reads very differently, independently of each other, so that it kind of create a finer grain read, to the extent that we change up the brick facade here on the bay, so that this would be also very distinctive from the kind of the brownstone that we have here. One of the major element is that we actually, because of the lift work, not the lift work, but the residential unit on the ground floor, what we've done is kind of work with the Public Works, and also to kind of create a edge, that's urban edge, that's a very different pedestrian experience with much more landscape buffer. So these are just more detail, kind of look at what we've done here. And some of the subtlety what we've done is also looking at some of these fenestration, and also the spandrel conditions in each one of these components, so that each one of the architectural components have a different expression in detail and colors. I think we can skip through this, because I think Lyndi has done a great job talking about kind of the architectural expression here, but you can very clearly see, there's a lot of definition of the articulations as compared to before. I think it's really interesting to see how the ground plane relates to the uses. As you can tell, we've maintained the retail here on the corner, and I think what Lyndi is suggesting on her condition of approval is maybe making this the retail component here. But as is proposed, that we have the retail on this corner transitioning into the main lobby of the project, and then they transition into the stoop condition here before you get to the alley, as opposed to where we had essentially retail frontage here, lobby, and then additional retail. So you can see that the street experience varies quite a bit. And I think part of the intention here is to enhance the overall pedestrian experience, so that you have a series of different experiences. Here's the view of the lobby, and the common areas for the apartment project, and it transitioned from the more public retail corner into a more residential type of a brownstone stoop condition. And then, one of the things, little detail things here, that was really important, that we have kind of a straight-on stoop conditions to create a more urban kind of edge along the El Camino Real. You can see the underlations of the spaces. Here is the major kind of setback within the entry and the retail corner, and then the transition into the more pedestrian scale kind of stoop conditions. I think in kind of summary, one of the things that we've done is, I think in overall, created quite a bit of different kind of hierarchy to the facade, as opposed to what we were before, because of the finer-grain articulations, as the building comes from the corner to the alley. We've added quite a bit of facade articulation and plane changes, in terms of also massing changes, and also quite a bit of enhancement of materials and detailing on kind of the fine grain of the building. We've added stoop conditions along the edge of ECR to kind of vary the pedestrian experience. And I think the treatment of the three-story base element is now a lot more varied than our previous proposal. And with that, you know, there's some comments regarding the DTPP interpretation, or I think the alternative one, and if there's any questions with the DTPP here, that we could be happy to elaborate on kind of our interpretation of it. So, thank you.
Any clarifying questions? I actually do have one. Can you go back to your last slide?
Sure.
And then done.
There you go. It's coming. There you go. One more?
I'm looking for the south corner.
South corner, okay. Thank you. We have to go backward here. There you go.
There we go.
There you go.
So, just for a second, explain the roof of the third level for me. It almost looks like they're separated with each indentation versus being one plane.
Correct. So, it's a varying kind of degree of variations here. So you have the higher parapet, which is constitute the parapet, and then there's, in between each one of the bay, there's actually a recess element with a lower parapet, so that you accentuate the change in the roof line. In addition to that, we have a bay window that kind of pops out to kind of create additional interest. And in a way, it's very similar to what was proposed on Marston. It kind of creates a lot more variations in the layering of the facade. So as you, I think there was one, if we can go back, one or two, you can kind of see the, one more, please. You can see, actually, the previous one. Yeah, you can see a lot more variations in terms of the forms.
Right. So I'm actually looking at the roof of that, the third. So instead of being one open space for the general residence, this is now...
Three separate, yeah.
Three, or four separate spaces to the units that they are directly off of.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, on the fourth-floor units, you actually have these balconies that opens out to the streets, yes.
Got it, got it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Commissioner Guevara.
Thank you. I have similar, on this graphic right here, I'm trying to visualize the changes in the setbacks, so if I understand correctly, the sidewalks were increased, is that right, to, was it 14 feet?
The sidewalk, actually, there's varying, the sidewalk in front of the lobby area is actually 10 plus 5 plus 3, and where the stoop condition is basically 6 plus 5 plus 3. So I think that experience also, you know, kind of give you a little bit more variations in the pedestrian feel.
Right. And then, with regards to the first three stories, is it correct that, so the first three stories rise up from the sidewalk, and then there's the setback, and then stories number four to eight, is that correct?
Yeah, so...
The setback.
So the three stories, as called for within the DTPP, the three-story element is kind of the base element, where the upper floor is required to setback 20 feet.
Okay.
So...
So it's a 20-feet setback?
20-feet setback, yes.
Just a clarification, it's 20 feet from the property line. As you see on the elevations, it's a 10 feet from the building facade.
Correct, yeah, I should clarify.
Are there any, any other picture that shows that? Any other visuals that show that? Not in this presentation?
In the DTPP, I mean, in terms of the plan, we actually have the plans right here that you can...
That's okay. I was just, I wanted to make sure I understand the setbacks correctly.
Yeah. So you can see that this is the setback from the PL, that 20 feet is about right here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hale has it, no? No, okay. Yes, no. Alrighty. So this is a public comment.
Move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion as second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alrighty. So I have a few speakers' cards. If anyone would like to make a comment, I will continue to take speaker cards. I will call a name and call the second. When you get up to the podium, you have three minutes. The green light will be on for two and a half minutes, then it'll go to yellow, and then it'll go to red. And there are a lot of different opinions in this room, so we have a practice of being respectful to all, so no clapping, or sneering, or yay, or we'll just be neutral to every comment. And my first speaker will be Dennis Gilroy, followed by Chris Johnson.
Good evening, Commissioners. I've not been here before, so this is my first time, so it's still kind of interesting. We only moved to Redwood City in 2009, looking for a smaller place from where we lived in Palo Alto, a place we could walk and explore, and it seemed like a lot of fun. But since then, we've just noticed all kinds of change with buildings going up. Some of them seem to be very large, but the large one, it's, I think condominiums down close to 101, don't look as big as some of these that aren't even started yet. I don't know what, how many additional units, people or units, we've built over the past six or seven or 10 years, but I sometimes wonder, what's it going to do to schools? What's it going to do to water? What's it going to do to waste? Traffic is already, where this is going up, a parking lot. Parking lot, period. I certainly like the after versus the before, but if the after could be changed to dropping off three or four stories, then it would seem to fit in a lot better. It wouldn't be so humongous, just out of place. Sometimes I think Redwood City is trying to solve the housing crisis on the whole peninsula. And I don't think that's realistic. But again, that's only my opinion. Thank you. Questions? Okay.
Everyone knows that we will take public comment. We do not comment on each speaker, so Chris Johnson will be followed by, oh boy, number 333 Hillview. I'm sorry, I can't read your last name.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners and City Staff. My name is Chris Johnson. I'm a 15-year resident of Redwood City. And I think this slide that I put together would be a good icebreaker for this evening. I went to the Grand Boulevard Initiative website, which we all know Redwood City is a member of the Grand Boulevard Initiative, and they have a list of all of the projects on El Camino, from San Francisco to San Jose, and there were 89 projects total. And I broke them into categories. 11, this includes commercial properties, also residential and mixed use. 11 of the projects were one-story tall, 12 were two-stories, 22 were three-stories, 30 were four-stories, and 12 were five-stories. And we have two projects, one seven-stories tall, and one eight-stories tall, and those both were proud owners of those two projects. So 98% of the projects, this visionary program that we subscribe to, the Grand Boulevard Initiative, 98% of the projects are five-stories and below. And it just goes to show you that five-story projects are profitable for developers. So I understand that zoning that allows for six, seven, and eight-story buildings is not your purview tonight. That's the Downtown Precise Plan that was adopted over five years ago. But stories equal impacts. And these aren't impacts just in the neighborhood that we're creating downtown, these are impacts in our surrounding neighborhoods. So, if you could go to the next slide, please. So the reason why impacts in our surrounding neighborhoods are so great right now, is that the orange portion of this slide represents full buildout of the Downtown Precise Plan. But you can see by this chart, that between 30 and 40% of the net new office, net new office, so if you think about all the office that we took off online, is online, and then the rest is housing, so we're finding these tremendous impacts in the neighborhoods that, with only a small portion of the actual construction being online. So if this project is approved, 60% of the office space allowed and almost 40% of the residential units are located within two blocks of each other. The Downtown Precise Plan is 183 acres in size. There's nothing in our Downtown Precise Plan for the EIR that accounts for this hyper-rate of over-concentrated development within two blocks of each other. So speaking of impacts, please pardon my tepid excitement over 35 affordable housing units, while we undoubtedly have an affordable housing crisis, this is the same developer who got approval for 617 market-rated units without a single penny being spent on affordable housing via impact fees or inclusionary housing. And it's also the same developer that took almost 28 units offline with Gray Star 3, when they closed the apartment building that was located at Gray Star 3. So, next slide, please. So in closing, I show you a project that I think Mr. Jonathan Hayes will recognize, and this is a project at 801 El Camino in Mountain View. It's four stories, 164 units, and mixed use. Next slide, please. And this is another project, located just off El Camino, Mountain View, another Gray Star project, which is five stories, it's a couple hundred units, and also a very nice building. If either of those two projects is what would be before you this evening, I'd be the first to raise my hand and say, let's approve those projects. Why is it that Mountain View gets these great-looking projects that are modest in size, and we get stuck with these seven- and eight-story buildings? So I thank you for your time this evening. I encourage you to defer action and request additional sequel analysis, alternative one on your staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. At 333? Sorry. Followed by Dave Gallagher.
I apologize for my handwriting. It's Pat Mahoney.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I was in Safeway a couple days ago, after waiting in a very long line. I had a little conversation with the checker, who said, "Welcome to the new Redwood City. It's like this all the time." And the line was backed up all the way from the entrance of Safeway to the Fish Department. I believe that this location demands a project that is less massive, and sensitive to the reality of the overcrowding that is occurring in the heart of Redwood City. I see two cars in the rendering, and as we all know, that is not reality. Everybody's aware of it. I believe also that we should be considering more family housing in our town. So many families have been displaced because of the rising cost of living here, and I don't see that the one-bedroom and studio model with occasional two-bedroom housing is serving families in our area. Although I do believe that the second iteration here is definitely improvement over the previous one, this is an opportunity to get it right. So please insist that the developer make some significant design improvements that will minimize the negative impacts. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Gallagher, followed by Joel Butler.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee. My name is Dave Gehagen. I've been here about 40 years.
Excuse me, Dave, can you pull the microphone up?
Oh, sure.
So we get you recorded.
Can you hear me now?
Thank you.
Great, thank you. I've been here about 40 years, and most of those 40 years have been fairly uneventful, but about, although enjoyable. About five years ago, I looked out at downtown, and things were changing, a lot of cranes and a lot of construction. And I started to ask why, and started talking to neighbors and so forth, and found out about the Downtown Precise Plan. And like most of people that I have as neighbors and so forth, we really didn't pay much attention to what was going on in Redwood City. But when I found out about the plan itself and started looking at it, I was surprised, and actually amazed at the breadth and scope and density and so forth that the plan allowed. And my sense is, and I may be wrong, but judging from the people I've talked with, if the plan was brought up today and shown to the people of Redwood City, there's no question in my mind, at least, that they would not allow for a plan that is extensive as it is to be passed, and allowing the degree of development that the plan does, the heights and so forth, it just wouldn't pass. But be that as it may, the plan is in place, I understand that. I also understand why developers want to develop. Money is cheap, property values are high and so forth, and so people want to make money, that's all well and good. But even though this plan or the development in question here has other developments that come before you, are in compliance with the Downtown Precise Plan and so forth, I would simply want to remind you that part of your job is to serve as the conscience of Redwood City, and safeguard the quality of life that we have here in this city. And you are the stewards of what will happen, not only now, but in the next 20, 40, 80 years. So if a developer comes before you and says, "Well, we can't make any money unless it's eight stories high," or whatever, wait. Someone will come before you and say, "Hey, six stories will work for us." So please, think about these things when you're making your deliberations, and just remember that there's always something else that can be done that's still in the best interest of the city and the developers and everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Joel Butler, followed by Jaf Khan.
Good evening, honored members of the Planning Commission. My name is...
My name is Joel Butler. Many of you know me. Let me start tonight by saying that our city will continue to grow because that is what good cities do. We need more housing in Redwood City near public transportation. This project provides it. We need more affordable housing in Redwood City. This project provides 35 units. Because projects take an amazing amount of time and effort, we should, to plan, design, approve, and build, we should act now to take the affordable units that are being offered here tonight. My understanding is that the affordable housing impact fees that the city has taken in currently is zero, despite those impact fees being approved in 2015. That's not enough to build any affordable units, let alone the 35 units that are being provided here tonight. The 35 units being provided is 10% of the total units for the project. On similar-sized projects in nearby jurisdictions, some cities are looking to give away land that the city owns for free in order to get less affordable units than we're talking about here tonight. This is a good deal for Redwood City, and we should act on it. As a side note, if anyone here in the audience tonight would like to talk about an affordable housing plan or project or alternative that they are proposing, I would love to talk to you after the meeting. And thank you very much. That's all.
Thank you. Jeff Carr, followed by Christina Umhofer.
Yeah, my name's Jeff Carr. I own 605 Middlefield Road. I'm the Darth Vader of the DTPP. I would encourage the developers of this project to follow suit with the ones that I've recently dealt with by suing them. There is an end to this chit-chat, and it ends with me and Chris Johnson and other people that put our money where our mouths are. Make this six stories, and you won't get sued. It's as simple as that. I could say more, but that's what they have to do. And they might want to talk to the people at 603 Jefferson to see how that happened. Thank you.
Mr. Carr. Christina Umhofer, followed by Bodhi Bastol.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, for having me tonight. Lived in Redwood City for over 40 years. I was not planning on speaking tonight, but the presentation by Gray Star left me with a question and a possible viable plan change that would make more sense to the Plan Bay Area and El Camino Real Corridor Plan. As just mentioned by a Gray Star representative, quote, "We are trying to bury the pedestrian experience on El Camino," end quote. We can't bury the pedestrian experience in El Camino. But what you, as a planning commissioners, can do is actually ask Gray Star to rotate their plan around and don't have the stoops on the El Camino side. Have them on the Franklin Street side. Have the Juliet balconies on the Franklin Street side because it's quieter. It's more neighborly on that side. And have the retail on the El Camino side. That fits in with the El Camino Corridor Plan. That fits in with the Plan Bay Area Plan. I'll let everybody else focus on the height of the building and the aesthetics of the building, but I just think as far as, you know, having a viable solution, I think that might really be a fair solution to ask and make everybody as happy as possible. That's it.
Thank you. Bodhi Bastol, that is my last speaker's card, so you're raring to speak. Get your card in.
Good evening. I'm a 10-year resident of Redwood City, and this is also my first time participating in the process. I'm happy to be here. When I reviewed the specific plans and also the DTPP, I was profoundly shocked at the emphasis the city has placed on accommodating developers over preserving the quality of life in Redwood City. Specifically, I'm concerned about traffic. I live in the Mount Carmel Edgewood Park area, and it takes me 17 or 18 minutes to get to 101 in the morning because all of the new offices coming online have caused a tremendous amount of new traffic to be using Edgewood. Similarly, when I come off of Whipple, it also takes anywhere from 20 to 30 minutes for me to get off of the Whipple intersection, to go down Whipple and exit somewhere in the King Street proximity. So I think that the traffic problem that all of this development has created is much larger than anticipated. From a legal perspective, I believe that Redwood City is violating its obligations under SEQUA by not revisiting the EIR. I think that the traffic mitigation measures that were examined were not fully examined and that multiple other traffic mitigation measures exist that have not been explored. I fully support the new vibrant downtown Redwood City, but I think the city needs to stop, pause, and take a look at some of the interesting traffic mitigation measures that could be explored. To be clear, there are interesting traffic mitigation possibilities that other cities have included. Option one includes a vehicle-to-infrastructure solution that transmits information from traffic lights to servers. Audi in Las Vegas just unveiled a solution that's similar. Option two, a traffic system with electronically synchronized signal controls and traffic monitors online, like the one in Gainesville, Florida, that includes real-time re-timing of traffic signals to account for congestion, provide priority for mass transit and emergency vehicles, and increase safety. The Gainesville official said, quote, "This is a classic example of a sustainable alternative and what a city can accomplish when everyone cooperates." The city built that themselves under budget. Option three, using Cisco's smart traffic management with real-time data analysis. Option four, using smart IoT technologies that manage traffic using wireless mess sensor approaches. Option five, meet with IBM, which has a traffic management system. The point is, we are at the heart of Silicon Valley. You guys are stewards of Redwood City, and there are multiple solutions based on technology that we could be exploring to mitigate the impact of traffic. It would be good from a moral perspective to look at these solutions, but more importantly, I believe from a legal perspective, the city has the obligation at this point to reevaluate the traffic mitigation measures that exist. I know that there's new data that overturns some of the studies based on the intersections of Hudson and Whipple. And I think that based on all of these trends, the city needs to stop and examine, basically do a subsequent EIR for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, that was my last speaker's card. Motion to close the public hearing. I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Okay, public hearing closed. Onto comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Chan, in your presentation, you had some before and after slides. And I think, I'm trying to find actually the same one, same comparison that we actually have in our staff report because it actually has sort of before and after for the full length of the El Camino elevation versus kind of splitting it up from north to south. Do we have that for your slides or not? That one? Yeah.
This is a flat version. I can pull up from the staff report.
Yeah, if we could get the artist's rendering from the staff report. Or if not, then can we get to the before and after, which I think the focus on the southern half since that is at least the area in which you stated probably had the most changes since November? Ah, there we go. Is there a way to kind of blow that up for big and everyone to see? Perfect. And while we're getting that, let me just also, I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge our last speaker. I am a technology guy. I love all the ideas and suggestions. I'll just go ahead and point out ahead of time and place of staff that El Camino Real, again, is a state highway, much like we just talked in the prior item, like Woodside Road. So the city of Redwood City has, in fact, no jurisdiction technically over the timing of lights and signals and all that kind of stuff. I think, you know, I'd love to take a look at all that stuff. It just probably is not something that Redwood City could do on its own on the El Camino Real Corridor itself. But so I wanted to bring this up, and I'll just go ahead and go first and say that I really have to say that I am quite disappointed in the applicant and in the revised proposal. And the reason I say all that is because there was a lot of discussion back in November 1 about a number of things. And quite frankly, a big portion of it for me was to have a significant or substantive change in the physical attributes of this entire elevation across the length of this project on El Camino. And so one of the things we talked about was this whole debate on retail versus residential on the ground floor, et cetera, et cetera. And I appreciate what's been done, but actually, what I was after was the fact that potentially removing the retail on the ground floor and dropping residential units on the ground floor was really a means, it was a mechanism, to potentially then have an additional step back at those higher floors. And so I talked at length on November 1 about using that maybe as one mechanism to reduce the overall height across the length of that elevation, at least completely adjacent, semi-adjacent to El Camino. So what that means is that what I was looking for was for an additional step back, similar to what was done between floors three and four. And again, maybe at least bringing that so that we could eliminate, effectively what I said at that evening was eliminate a floor at least to a certain point behind in another step back. So there's my disappointment. So while I actually agree that some of the finer little things are still very much an improvement over the last one, from going from November 1 to tonight, this is a miss. And this did not move the needle of what I was looking to accomplish. So there's my comments and my feedback. I don't see a significant enough adjustment on the direction that at least I know I gave on that particular evening. And knocking off one little tiny corner on the south, on the south corner alone, this did not move the needle in my mind.
Mr. Bondano? Any other comments? Okay, well, Mr. Hunter.
I really value what Commissioner or Vice Chair Bondano just said, and I'll take that into account. But I just want to give my overall comments. And first of all, thanks to everybody who testified in person and wrote letters. We received lots and lots of letters, and I really appreciate the public comment. This project contains good and bad elements, I think clearly. The good, obviously, is lots of high-density, transit-oriented housing and onsite affordable housing that will be available right away but with no subsidies from the city. Those are great. The bad is the height and the mass, which is still, I think, I understand the public testimony, that this building is much taller than any other building on El Camino, and I wish it was five or six stories. I think the changes to break up the facade definitely are an improvement, but I wish it would present a less massive appearance, too, perhaps through a deeper four-story step back. In our last meeting, the applicant claimed that they were prohibited under the Downtown Precise Plan from making a deeper step back, like in the Marston Project, which didn't sound right. And it turns out that staff has investigated that. And while it's not required, it certainly is permitted to have, say, a 40-foot step back instead of the 20. I understand the public's fears of additional traffic, although I am encouraged that the trip generation study that you submitted did seem to show less traffic generation than was predicted or expected in the Downtown Plan EIR. Unfortunately, and I may be wrong about this, but I believe that our hands are fairly tied because although the Downtown Precise Plan doesn't eliminate our discretion, it does eliminate it, it does limit it to deny a project or condition or approval if it meets all the standards and guidelines, which I think it does. There's also a state law that restricts our ability to reduce the size of a housing project if it meets all objective plan and zoning standards. So in this case, eight stories are allowed, and it appears that the project meets the standards and guidelines. So I may be convinced that we may, our hands may be tied in this matter just because of the nature of the downtown, the prescriptive nature of the Downtown Precise Plan. If we do vote to approve this, possibly with the condition that staff recommended, I know that there will be a lot of disappointment among the people who have testified, but I would want to step back and take a look at the big picture. And again, I don't want to minimize everybody's legitimate concerns about mass and traffic. And if I could fix these things, I would. But on balance, I think this project does give Redwood City some very good and important things. We need high-density, transit-oriented housing, and we need onsite affordable housing. And this will help us to achieve both of these goals. So that's kind of my overall look at this.
Yes, thank you. So hearing different things here on the dais, and I was not here the first time this was brought forward, so catching up a bit. I actually did meet with the developer as well to get more background on this project. And quite frankly, I was a little bit confused because we have the AAC to provide architectural direction, and it sounds like at the last meeting, there was a lot of discussion around some of these elements. And I would echo some of the comments I heard from the public. Let's see here, there was one from Ms. Umhofer about retail on the El Camino and putting the stoops on the other side. I personally think retail belongs on the El Camino. I liked that about the original proposal, so I'm a little confused about how that guidance was given to the developer. I think of the changes they made are aesthetically pleasing and certainly sounds like there was a concession around that from members of the public who otherwise disagreed with other elements of the proposal, massing, the height, et cetera. But overall, I have to agree with Commissioner Hunter that in terms of what this body does is oversee the instrumentation of technical instruments of the city, like the Downtown Precise Plan, like the general plan. And this, by everything I've looked at, falls within those guidelines. I agree this does provide a number of good things for the city. I am excited about the affordable housing, about the 1.2 million towards housing, and additionally, the $250,000 going towards the Habitat project. Again, I like some of the changes. I like the brick facade. I like how it's broken up. It gives it that cityfront appeal. I don't understand having stoops on El Camino. It's charming, but it seems out of place for that part of the city. So I would be more in favor of, there was another alternative. Alternative two, I believe, would put the retail there. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just follow up on that and say that I also agree, because I said this at the last meeting, that retail really belongs on El Camino. The four units, to me, don't help activate the sidewalks or the street level. I recognize some of my colleagues are not going to agree with me, and they don't, but that's kind of how I feel as far as the retail. I did like the idea of the speaker that said, turn it around. That was that easy, right? But, you know, that's kind of my thinking. I still believe that the retail should stay on El Camino. But I do like all the revisions that were done. That's why I asked the question about the setbacks because I was trying to understand, you know, the changes that had taken place. So I kind of want to look and see what we can do, maybe. I don't know, I would be okay trying to see if we could bring this back as a six-story and evaluate. trying to see if we could bring this back as a six-story and evaluate and consider the consequences for everything else.
Commissioner Bondano?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate my colleagues' comments, and I think that honestly is part of my disappointment because I am, and I stated this in November, I am all for all of the other benefits that this project brings, the housing, the affordable housing components, et cetera, et cetera. So there's a lot of benefits in this particular application, and that's where my disappointment, I think, lands, in that we had a lot of conversation, and when I look at these two images, we gave a lot of input and suggestions and of potentially some significance, and when it came effectively, right, for most intents and purposes, this is the same project. And so this is where my frustration kind of comes in, that, again, we just did not move the needle. If we had, if I was looking at something different across the top, I'd have a different quandary and be balancing, well, you know, they did, at least they did what I asked them to do or to consider. And I don't see that that was really put forward in all the best and good faith. And so again, quite honestly, the residential, the retail on the ground floor, to me, almost now seems, it's inconsequential in the fact that it didn't actually adjust and change the larger topic at hand that I was interested in. I thought that we might have came up with a creative solution to help facilitate the broader topic of dropping the height along El Camino at the upper stories, an additional step back. That's what I was after. That's what I do not see, and so that's why it's amiss. My recommendation, where I would go this evening, is not to deny the project, but I would actually say, I would suggest deferring it and actually asking the applicant to, yet again, come back and see if we can come up with a better project.
Thank you, Commissioner Bondano. In response to your question, Commissioner Hale, I think one of the things that we were talking about as far as making the ground floor housing units would, that is what we expected, is a little more differential in the facade of the building. You don't need as high a ceiling heights for residential as you do for commercial. So we were thinking we were getting a little more fenestration when we made that request. Go ahead.
Yeah, I could see, I think there's a pro and con there, right? I mean, we just talked about it in terms of the sidewalk, then you have the pavers versus... So I guess you want to look at the project in its entirety, right?
Right. Yep. Yep. So I would say...
But that is helpful context. Thank you for my benefit, having not been there.
Through the chair. One thing I will add to that, because that was a consideration made by staff as an option. Number one, it was the ceiling height. We were just trying, we heard some concerns about height, so we were trying to figure out ways that you could drop the overall height of the building through the ground floor. The second was, we had also heard concerns about the looks of the buildings and some of the monotony of having the same type of building built out, so we're trying to break up the pedestrian experience as you're walking along, so it wouldn't be all the same thing. And then the third thing is, we had heard comments that a lot of the illustrations that were done in the Downtown Precise Plan showed a variation of retail along with residential porch stoops along, and that's what was one of the things that was considered when the Downtown Precise Plan was approved. But you're right, there's trade-offs with everything. There's certain negative aspects of that, and there could be positive ones as well.
So I think we haven't quite hit the mark that we want to hit. I don't think that residential has quite done the job that you want it to do, and so I think we're almost there. Putting the retail on the corner is like an afterthought to me on the south corner. It's like you would be sitting there all by yourself, so. And for the third floor, gosh, I love the Marston building, and I think having that straight across communal area is great. So this kind of being cut up is a little disconcerting to me. But those, such as the question...
To qualify, yeah, your concerns are...
I don't think it'll be an active space, being cut up like that, whereas for the third floor... It's only 10 feet deep, and it's very compartmentalized on the roof. Are you following me?
I'm sorry, I thought those were balconies. Could you clarify?
Right, individual unit versus like the Marston where it's all one communal. Follow me.
So you'd prefer it to be one, was it previously?
Yes.
And so you wanted to go back to that?
Excuse me, it's always been individual balconies on that floor.
Oh, really?
Yeah, not a communal space.
Okay. That was my assumption. That's what I was trying to clarify. Yeah. Okay. Okay, so those are some of my comments. Commissioner Hunter?
Yeah, so Commissioner Bondano, I'm certainly open to sending it back to make the project better, improve it. Would your goal be for this to be seven stories? Would it be to have a 40-foot setback on the third or the fourth story? Do you have, because if we are going to send this back, we should probably have specific guidance for what we want to get to.
Absolutely. And through the chair, Commissioner Hunter, what I stated in November was, I didn't believe it was reasonable or feasible to ask the applicant to remove the stories throughout the entire project, like all the way to the back, right? So I was trying to find a way to remove at least the top story or stories, basically this white portion, thank you, Ms. Chan, right? So we go from kind of gray to brown to white. So that white block, my proposal then was, we could eliminate that, maybe find room to put those elsewhere on the ground floor, but have a second step back that then would actually not only just visually address the size and the massing, but would actually physically drop the massing from the perspective of El Camino. So to the extent that, like, do I know, does that need to be 10, 20, 30 feet? I don't know that I would be able to put that number in front of you, but I would say at least sort of step it back, at least at the same amount that was done here, where these nice little red umbrellas particularly are, so that we almost could see as if we think the way this would appear is that we've actually eliminated potentially a story, at least from the majority of the public's view, even though we might have the remainder of the surrounding courtyard walls behind it. Does that help?
Second step back, say, at the seventh story?
Correct.
Yes, that does. Thank you.
Yeah. So effectively, what they did here at the very southern corner, so they just dropped one unit, is what they did. They dropped one unit on the corner. And my point was, no, let's reduce the height along the entire length of that elevation. Does that make sense? Does that help? Okay.
So out of curiosity for Commissioner Bondano, could you describe the motivation here for the change that you'd like to see happen?
I want to drop the overall height. Again, it was somewhat of a compromise, if you will, right? Not to say that the entire project would need to come down to six stories, but let's go ahead and compromise and sort of take a portion of it off what the majority of the public and El Camino and where everyone is so concerned about doing, that this would actually be a much better way to visually and actually just reduce it, so we have something that looks not so large, massive, and right up in front on El Camino.
Yeah, I just want to express strong disagreement for this direction. I believe that we have excellent guidelines that were formed by the community through the Downtown Precise Plan, that this proposal conforms with those, and I actually disagree. I don't know that that complies with what the majority of the public is asking for in what I've read, because I've heard comments that vary from...
Let me clarify. Not the majority of the public opinion, the majority of the public view from a major thoroughfare.
So you believe setting it back one floor is going to change the public view?
No, no, no.
And we should optimize for that versus what's prescribed in the Downtown Precise Plan?
That's correct.
Why?
Because I'm looking at a little bit of the, not just the letter of the plan in this time, but the intent as well. And so you chalk it up to my personal opinion, but that's where I stand.
That's helpful, and I agree that that is a personal opinion. And I do want to look at this project in its entirety and all the wonderful benefits that it brings to the community. And so I think this is an example of where you have a personal preference, where there is something potentially minor to be gained from one single perspective on the building versus what this project can do and enhance and bring to the community, as well as seeing through our vision, our city's shared vision of the Downtown Precise Plan, which this project is in full compliance of.
Yeah. And through the chair, I think we could do both. Honestly, I'm trying to find a win-win. I think we can actually do both. And that's what I'm suggesting.
Yeah, I would add to that, then, that it sounds like, and I wasn't here for the first meeting, there may have been a lack of clarity in some of the feedback, and if we have feedback for the developer and would be sending them back again, it might be really helpful to be incredibly clear about what it is we do want, such that disappointment wouldn't be the result next time, right? Because part of that is the communication process as well.
Right.
In fairness.
Yeah. Through the chair, fair enough. I believe that, I believe we did provide clear communication.
Thank you for all this feedback and commentary on this. When we left the hearing on November 1st, we had feedback and direction, and it wasn't that any of that was ignored. It was balancing the needs of the feedback we received with the plan, with the constraints of maintaining the project substantially as it was shown before, because what's important here is that we can provide these substantial benefits because we have 315 marker rate units that allow us to subsidize the payment of all those benefits. And I hope it doesn't fall on deaf ears because it's truly a meaningful component of this project. Making the switch from paying a fee to onsite was a fundamental shift in this project, and we did that because we understand the city's policies and directives to meet affordability for our residents in the area. And there's commentary about how the burden of solving our communities, our greater communities' housing needs are falling on Redwood City's shoulders, and I think that's a bit unfair. It just so happens that the vision of the Downtown Precise Plan and the timing of that when it was laid out, the city's experienced this growth, but you shouldn't necessarily see that as a bad thing. And when we went back to evaluate the design based upon this feedback, we looked at a scenario where those units that you had pointed out, Commissioner Bondano, where those were removed. However, when we looked at the massing of the building, it was such a stark contrast at the roof line with the lack of articulation that we thought this, while it's addressing some of the feedback, it wasn't achieving the other comments we received of articulation at the roof line, setbacks, variation in the cap and fenestration elements. And so it's constantly a push and pull. The same thing happened down on the ground plane at El Camino with stoops versus retail. Some commissioners were supportive of retail, others were not. And so it truly is a balancing act, taking in all this feedback we're getting. And so I'm standing here saying that it is important for us to recognize the magnitude of these benefits and that we can do this by having the 315 marker rate units. Increasing setbacks jeopardizes that, in all honesty. And when we look at the Downtown Precise Plan, we see specific direction in that that outlines how that setback, how deep that setback needs to be. And so that's our interpretation of that, and we can point to that, and we're happy to discuss it if we'd like, but we believe that this is in full compliance and balances all those needs. So again, I hope you can appreciate that and really look at what we're bringing to table and the long-term vision for this. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Oh, we seem to be of a couple minds here. Yeah. Commissioner Guerrero?
Yes, thank you. I had a question, or maybe a couple. I kind of going through, you know, the thinking of the Downtown Precise Plan and the heights in this project, what was the allowable building height before Downtown Precise Plan?
It varied in different locations. I don't know the exact height that was allowed here, but there were some areas that allowed up to buildings that were up to about 100, 120 feet in height.
And then, I know that the El Camino Real Task Force has been meeting. I just wanted to see how this project aligns with the goals, and we talked about it a little bit. Is there more information? I mean, one of the presenters had, you know, building heights and stuff like that. Can you go into that a little bit more?
Yes. The El Camino Real Plan and Community Working Group has been reviewing different types of goals and opportunities for El Camino Real, but one of the things that the plan isn't really specifically going to do is adjust zoning or general plan requirements along El Camino Real. So their vision is to maintain, for the most part, the zoning, which is relatively recent outside of the Downtown Precise Plan in 2013, and then maintain the Downtown Precise Plan areas along El Camino Real as well. So there's no real big movements in requirements and regulations with regard to zoning or land use proposed.
I think that's the last question I had. Thank you.
Okay.
Do I make a motion? Or are we more discussion?
Yeah.
So for the reasons that I stated earlier, I guess I would move that we adopt resolution number PC 16-20, and should I read the whole text?
The whole resolution.
Okay. The resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Redwood City, approving a downtown planned community permit tentative parcel map and affordable housing plan for 1409 El Camino Real pursuant to the City of Redwood City's Downtown Precise Plan subdivision ordinance and affordable housing impact fee ordinance. And I would also want to include the condition that staff recommended regarding the 2,000 square feet of ground floor space at the corner of El Camino and the alley.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion and a second discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Guerrero?
Yes.
Hale?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Schmidt is out. White is out, and Vice Chair Bondano?
No. No.
Mayor Radcliffe?
Yes.
Motion carries, four to one.
Thank you. All right, we will now go on to, lost my first page here, matters of commission interest, I believe.
Yes, just a few items. The last question from Commissioner Guerrero related to the-
Excuse me, we're still in the meeting. If you have conversation, could you take it outside, please?
Yes, Commissioner Guerrero brought up the El Camino Real Corridor Plan as it relates to this project. Would want to give a plug for the meeting that's happening tomorrow chaired by Vice Chair Bondano for the Citizens Advisory Group. The agenda is to discuss and prioritize concepts and options for the corridor, which include bicycling, parking, transit, vehicle travel and traffic, and community benefits. That's being held in this room at 7:00 PM tomorrow, and all the members of the public are invited for that discussion. And as well, the California League of Cities is holding its annual planning commissioners' conference this year in early March. It's in Southern California this year, but the city will pay registration fees for planning commissioners who would like to attend. You may have gotten the little pamphlet in the mail, but if not, I'll just go ahead and send a notice of that conference to everybody tomorrow. I believe it's March 1st through 3rd, so you wouldn't miss a planning commission meeting during that, that first week of March.
So for our new commissioners, it's a great program if you can fit it into your schedule. Some great breakout things, and that was the first time I heard of form-based planning, so it was, you learn a lot.
I know. Other comments at this end?
Great.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Just to sort of piggyback on that topic of the El Camino Real Citizens Advisory Group, and so our staff person on that working group is Ms. Chan, as well, as Mr. Turner mentioned, we're going to be meeting tomorrow night here in this chamber at 7 o'clock. And then I think what we're going to do is, to Commissioner Guerrero's kind of earlier question, somewhat related, tomorrow night is actually kind of asking the advisory group to start to weigh in on some thoughts and directions on priorities and some of the things that we're doing. So, and so I say all that just that we don't have much of, I don't have much of an update since the last time we met, but I think on our tentative agenda for the Planning Commission, Ms. Chan and I will be working together to bring a better, more formal update to the Planning Commission, tentatively scheduled for February 21st.
Please share more information about this advisory committee. Is it a part of the Planning Commission? What's our relationship to them? Are these appointees? Just say a little more about what it is.
It's an advisory committee put together by, appointed by city council to look at the El Camino Real, correct? And you can certainly address that better than I, but-
Correct. So this, each city council member appointed one resident at large to this committee, and they will ultimately make a recommendation both to the Planning Commission and to the city council.
Yeah. And so there's, each council member made an appointment, then there's also representation from the Planning Commission, from Complete Streets, and, yeah, Housing and Human Concerns. Yeah. So that's the body, and think of it like a task force, basically, okay?
Great. Thank you. And thank you for sharing that. Yeah. Okay. Motion to-
Motion to close?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good evening, everyone. God, it's cold.